We're going to go ahead and begin the work session. At three o'clock on Tuesday, May 21st. How's that? Sorry. In attendance, we have Member Bellamy, Member Lessons, Member Wilson, Superintendent Bryant, myself, Andy Holloman, Member Higgins. Member Jacobs is watching online and not sure about Member Donnelly. But if he comes in, we will make a note. On our agenda first, our board request for information. I have two on the list right now. Requests from Member Lessons about classes that are likely to be cut. If we don't get additional funding, that is, if our PTR goes up by one. If we're able to identify classes that are at risk. And a request from Member Higgins as part of the rightsizing discussion, the impacts to utilization if Picasaden were implemented. And are there other requests for information from board members at this time? I do want to take a moment to say, for purposes of the recording, we do need people to make sure they are close to their microphone and speaking clearly. And as a side effect from getting over the flu, my head is full of fluid. And so I can't hear very well. So if I, and especially if there's background noise, I have a very hard time with it. So if I miss anything, please feel free to correct me on it. Thank you. With that, are there any other requests for information from board members? Seeing none, we'll move to the first item under Section C, the Stop It data. I believe we have staff to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So today we'll be providing the board an overview of our mental health and student support services with the particular emphasis on bullying and related data and supports that we have in place. So I'll hand it off to our colleague or my teammates.
Good afternoon, School Board. We'll do our first introduction before we get going. My name is Eric Visby. I'm the Senior Director for Elementary Education.
I'm Joe Zawadny, Senior Director for Middle School Education.
Tony Riley, Senior Director for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement.
Hi, I'm Sarah Dijkstra, Director of SBL.
All right, welcome. I know the topic was on Stop It data and we wanted to give you a bigger picture view on our overall mental health and student supports that we service for students in K through 12th grade. This presentation, we're going to go over the definition of discrimination, harassment, and bullying. We'll talk about behavior incident reporting and documentation. We'll go over in more specific detail regarding bullying and data, which is where we'll have the information on Stop It Q, our student information system. And then we'll talk, give a dive into social emotional learning as well as our, one of our big initiatives, which is our positive behavior interventions and supports. So bullying, according to the CDC, is a form of youth violence. The CDC defines bullying as any unwanted aggressive behavior by another youth or group of youths who are not siblings or current dating partners. And involves an observed and perceived power imbalance and is repeated multiple times or is highly likely to be repeated. It may inflict harm or distress on the targeted youth, including physical, psychological, social, or educational harm. It can include aggression that is physical, verbal, or relational or social. It can also occur through technology, and we specifically refer to that as cyberbullying. A young person could be an aggressor or a victim, or could be both. Our ASD handbook has definitions regarding discrimination and harassment and that being a single act. And we do also have cyberbullying in our handbook that is specific. However, in our handbook, we don't currently have a definition of bullying, which is something that our PBIS team, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Team, is working on developing. Our board policy regarding bullying and harassment is listed here. Big elements of that would be the intent of threatening, intimidating, or frightening the student and causing physical harm or damage to student property, interfering with the child's education or student's education. And the persistency and pervasiveness is such that it creates an intimidation factor that threatens the educational environment for a student. And lastly, there's a disruption of the orderly operation of the student. So those are some elements that we look at when we're distinguishing what is and what isn't bullying based off our board policy. Our student handbook has the following described under discrimination, harassment, bullying. So discrimination really ties into the partiality or the prejudice that is directed towards others by an individual. Harassment really ties into a single act or force of behavior that an individual or group behaves in, but that doesn't really serve any legitimate educational purpose and is there to intimidate or alarm or abuse that person or individuals. And lastly, the cyberbullying really are all of those things, however, would be done through electronic. For that, that type of behavior.
Thank you, Eric. So at this time, I'd like to provide some context and information about how we document and respond to incidents of discrimination, harassment, and bullying. The data that we collect can come to us in many ways from the administration level. It can come to teachers or administrators at the building, from students, from families, or from other staff members. We receive information about these types of behaviors through an application that we brought on three years ago called Stop It, which is an anonymous reporting tool that we have available to our staff and families and students online. We collect data through Gaggle Reports. Gaggle is a program that we brought on during the pandemic to help us make sure that students were safe as they started using online tools for education more often. Gaggle monitors our Google accounts, our Google platform, and looks for keywords and lets us know if students are engaged in behavior or using words that would cause us concern. And our administrators and some administrators at the district level as well receive those sorts of reports as they come through. We have a student grievance process that we'll discuss in further detail as well. And that's another way that students can alert us to concerns that they have about the way that they're being treated. And then we also receive documentation around student beliefs and feelings around behaviors through our school climate connectedness survey. And I'll be sharing some data from these tools with you here momentarily. The two main ways that we document these behaviors as they become aware to us at the district and building level are through our Q Behavior Module, which is in the Q Student Information System, and through Power School, which is a way that we help document and monitor students' individual education programs and behavior plans. So the first set of data you see here, we pulled numbers from Q, from our student information system around discrimination, harassment, and bullying, and cyberbullying. Before I really dig too deep into the numbers, it's important to know that in Q, in our student information system, we pull all discrimination, harassment, and bullying behaviors into one code. And we cannot through Q disaggregate which of these incidents were specifically bullying, discrimination, or harassment as defined through our student handbook, as Senior Director Visby has already shared. Some of the work that we're doing right now through our positive behavior interventions and supports is to more clearly articulate what behaviors are being demonstrated by students and how we're responding to those. And so the work that we're undergoing right now through that initiative will in the future help us more clearly delineate what kinds of behaviors are happening. To kind of dig into the slide that you see here. 2019, of course, was when we really started to feel the effects of the COVID pandemic that happened after spring break in 2020. And so the numbers of discrimination, harassment, bullying incidents in 2019, 20, it's not a complete dataset. It really just includes quarters one through three. During the 2020 and 2021 school year, students were online. And so obviously, our incidents of bullying and harassment discrimination, those numbers were far down. They weren't experiencing that many types of incidents. As we came back from the pandemic and returned to school-based instruction, that's where we started to see the numbers tick back up. And I think it's important to note, as we look at these numbers moving up after the pandemic, it's also when we started documenting and using data through Gaggle and Stop It. And as we start to bring on more tools to help collect these incidents, I think you're going to see an increase in documentation of them. I think before these tools, a lot of time, these incidents may have occurred and we were not aware. And so now there's more opportunities and tools for students to share their experiences with administration. So looking at data that we have in our student information system, this breaks down those 652 incidents of discrimination, harassment, and bullying by school type. You'll see that more than half of those incidents occur in middle schools, 54%. Followed by high school or elementaries, and then we have incidents reported to administration in our alternative charter and our K programs. So this simply just shows how those incidents are distributed across our schools. As I mentioned, as we're working with students on communicating their concerns and their needs to administration, we really rely on Stop It and Gaggle. Students and families are aware of both of these platforms through communications, through newsletters, through posters in school, especially around Gaggle. We did some very intentional communication with families as students started using Chromebooks and other technologies for instruction. As they started to see these reports come up, it's really important that as we receive notifications through Stop It and Gaggle, administrators are quick to contact families and make sure that they're in the loop on these concerns as well. And so we've really been pushing this and families can access the Stop It app from the ASD website as well. So using the Stop It reports from this year, this is data as of last week. We received 260 reports through Stop It. Reports that students and families can share. They come up with different categories. We have categories such as bullying, discrimination, harassment, vaping, drug use, depression, any number of behaviors that are alarming to students. So of those 260 reports that came to us through Stop It this year, 76 were related to bullying. To break those numbers down even more, we saw of those 76 incidents, and this follows pretty closely with the information we see in Q, 43% were related to middle school students, 37 for high school, and 20% were from elementary school students. We thought it was interesting also just to add that as we know the prevalence of behaviors that we're seeing online, we wanted to disaggregate those numbers a little bit. And through Stop It, we're seeing that about a third of those harassment and bullying reports are related to social media. And the other two thirds are related to probably in-person, whether they be at school or even at home. A lot of the concerns that students and families bring to us are, you know, are from incidents that originate or that occur off school grounds. But because it impacts their instruction and their feeling of safety at school, the district will often take jurisdiction and handle those situations ourselves. So pulling the 652 discrimination, harassment, bullying incidents that we had in the district this year, those are incidents that occurred across all levels of instruction, K-12. I wanted to just share some of the, dig into some of the numbers a little bit, just so you have some more context. Those 652 incidents were committed by 560 students, which means that we do have some students that engage in these behaviors more than once, and that's documented. You know, when we refer to recidivism of behaviors, it's really a way for us to determine, are the strategies and tools that we're providing to help mitigate these behaviors, is it working? And when, you know, when only about a 20%, when 20% of our students are engaged in behaviors more than once, I think it shows that a lot of these efforts are succeeding. In those 652 incidents, our staff employed over 1,000 types of actions to help respond to those incidents. Some of those are conferencing with students, some of them are providing out-of-school suspensions. And oftentimes will employ more than one action. So a student may receive an out-of-school suspension, but also work with the counselor and the other student and engage in a mediation. So it's really important to us to document in our student information system, all of the supports that we're providing so that we can really kind of see what types of strategies work for different students. These are just the top eight actions that we used with this behavior type this year. There are 21 different types that were used, some like notify police were used a few times. Saturday school was used a number of times. I didn't list those lesser-used strategies. But it's important to know that we have a lot of tools in our tool belt to help address these types of behaviors.
Thanks, Joe. So the other place that this information comes to us is through the student grievance process. So this process is run out of the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Student Engagement. So there is a component based on Title IX and student civil rights that this deals with, but it also can deal with things such as scheduling, or attendance, or just issues that they can't resolve at the school level. So we do have a process and procedure for this. We do tell students that if it's something that they can't work out in their building with their principal or their school staff, they're encouraged to use this student grievance process. This is something that my office has worked on this year, so you'll see an updated form. So the purpose of this is really to bring forth other information that's there and access beyond harassment. So we know that everything is in sexual harassment. So we wanted to really put on there other instances that can happen, such as bullying, and that is listed there as well as other methods of contact. So this is something that all the schools have. It is also accessible on our website as well. Students or parents can download the form and send in this information. And through the procedure, what will happen is an independent investigation done by my office that can include interviews with staff and students or other witnesses, and then a formal sort of resolution process that will have some measures to move the situation forward. The other piece of data that we wanted to look at was our Climate and Connectedness Survey for some longitudinal data. So we looked specifically at two areas, and this was peer climate and adults. So looking here at peer climate, what we are asking, or this kind of group of questions it's asking, is about how students feel about one another. So peer climate refers to students' perceptions of how respectful and helpful other students are to each other. So you'll notice that this has gone down significantly over the years. 43% was actually when we weren't in school. It was during the pandemic. So since we've returned post-pandemic, it's consistently gone down when students are talking about their interactions between one another. However, when you look at caring adults, so this is another section that looks at students' perceptions and their closeness to adults. So this will ask questions like, someone will notice if you are not at school, or I have a caring adult, or at least five people in the school that I can go to if I have a question or concern. This has gone the opposite way. Our score has increased over time. So when students were out of school for the pandemic, you'll notice a 51%. And this has gone up the last couple of years, and this year we're sitting at 61%.
All right, and I get the pleasure of talking to you about what we're doing to prevent this work. So as you know, ASD has adopted SEL standards that we use to guide our instruction and to teach specific skills to students. That SEL is taught through both direct instruction at the middle school and high, middle school and elementary level through academic infusion into their learning and just through overall positive school climate. We have, our SEL specifically addresses some bullying prevention lessons as well as general conflict resolution lessons. There's also some of this worked on through our health curriculum. So at the elementary level, schools utilize either second step or connected and respected. And we have some kind of guidance for schools of where those specific bullying prevention and conflict resolution lessons are. At the middle school, we're using Lion's Quest as our direct instruction. And then we also have health curriculum addressing these as well. They're kind of intertwined. We also, in high, in high school, we don't have necessarily an SEL class, right, for direct instruction. But there's a lot of supplemental resources for infusion of SEL standards throughout the content areas. At high school, these SEL skills are really embedded throughout the day. And it's part of what we're teaching through employability and our career readiness. And it will be part of the work that we're doing through the kind of the language. So I wanted to just show you a couple of examples of what the bullying looks like. So in second step, which is in our elementary curriculum, they teach kids to recognize it, to report it, and to refuse, kind of stop it and stand up. So those are just some examples of teaching them to be a bystander that can actively stop it. And then in middle school, this is from the Lion's Quest. They teach different types of bullying. So there's some really direct instruction skills that we're teaching kids to recognize that and know how to report it. So then when we think about bullying prevention, it really needs to be embedded in our school-wide expectations. Every school should be establishing their own school-wide expectations, maybe be safe, be responsible, be respectful. And we talk about exactly what that is. We don't expect kids to know that, what's expected before they come in. So we teach those school-wide expectations and teach what bullying looks like there. And then part of that is also that direct instruction, then those signals and routines for unwanted behavior. So teaching students, what is it that you should do when you're having behavior that you don't want? So is it a hand signal, maybe saying stop, enough, whoa, that's too far? And practicing that with students, and then also teaching kids how to respond to that stop signal, right? Because it can be hard to know what to do when someone does use that stop signal. So practicing that, making sure that students have a chance to kind of recognize what feelings they'll have when someone uses a stop signal for them, that's some of that direct instruction that we use. And then knowing how to recruit help, right? So who do you go to? When do you go to them? Where do you go if you're in high school? Where's the offices of the people that you need to go to in middle school? What's a good time to go get help if you need some help with this? So we're teaching those expected behaviors to kids. And that's all part of really our positive behavior interventions and support. So PBIS is an evidence-based tiered framework for supporting those behavioral, academic, and social emotional needs and really responding to mental health needs in school. So we want to show you guys a video that we have, just kind of demonstrating what PBIS is looking like in our schools here in ASD.
In the Anchorage School District, we are implementing PBIS, which means Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. What this means is that we are aligning our behavioral supports in all of our schools, pre-K through 12, with an evidence-based framework to plan and ensure that we're meeting kids' needs. We want to make sure that adults are consistent and proactive to support students and to create a consistent, safe, positive, and predictable place for students to learn. So what does this mean in schools? It means that schools are defining what their behavior expectations are. So perhaps it's be safe, be responsible, be respectful. And they're teaching those specifically and explicitly to students. Then when students are showing those behaviors, we want to make sure that we're reinforcing that behavior, telling them when they're doing a great job.
The expectations from classroom to classroom. Sure, each teacher has their own personality, and that is part of learning too in middle school. You have seven different teachers and how different teachers' personalities are. But in the foundation, again, it's all grounded in those three, be kind, be safe, be responsible, whether it's a science class, or social studies class, or PE, that they know what to expect.
But we know that students aren't going to always do what we teach them to do. So we want to make sure we have a consistent response when students are not doing those things. So the adults aren't just reacting, but they're responding. They know what to do. They can stay calm and consistent when students aren't meeting those expectations.
Especially this year, there are lots of, they're doing labs for the first time that they've never done before. And so lots of reteaching and having the support of other people saying, okay, I'm reteaching this thing today. It might not be the same thing that I'm reteaching, but we're all practicing this. Reteach, reteach, reteach. Don't get mad, reteach.
As a specialist myself, I appreciate it because when the kids come to me, I don't have to learn every teacher's ins and outs of how they structure things for their kids because we all just have the same general structure. And so they can come in and they kind of move very fluidly throughout our school because all the adults are working on the same page. And it really lets the kids, there's no surprises for the kids. They know what is going to be expected of them no matter where they are.
So we're tracking with data both what adults are doing and what's happening with kids.
One of the great things that our PBIS team does is ongoing professional development where we are able to look at staff needs as well as data that comes in for behavior that students are showing. And we're able to look at supporting our teachers with adding tools to their toolbox, if you will, to support and teach those expected behaviors for students.
Majority of the PBIS work that is teamed is we have an actual PBIS committee that has faculty and staff that's a pretty good cross-section of our faculty to include security, our psychologists, and then other members of staff, as well as a few administrators. And then we also work with our department chairs. So that's the leads for all of our subject-specific departments.
It really bonds us all together. So we all have a common purpose and a common goal that we're working towards. We use the same language, same expectations. So as a school, our kids are our kids, and they can expect the same thing from all the adults they encounter.
It's been a lot because, you know, there's a lot of initiatives happening. But I am so happy that we took this on, and I'm looking forward to, you know, supporting other schools as they go on this journey of PBIS.
So as you know, we are using a multi-tiered system of support to organize the interventions in our building, our systems and practices. And it really outlines how we provide that support to students. And PBIS is just one robust example of a multi-tiered system of support to support that behavior and mental health. And the really important thing about this integrated system is that it has to mirror each other, right? So our behavior and our academic systems really work together. We don't want two different teams, two different systems. We want them working together. So that core instruction, really, we use our high-leverage practices, our SEL instruction, our school- So that core instruction, really, we use our high-leverage practices, our SEL instruction, our school-wide systems and practices. And that's really where bullying prevention lessons would come in. And it has to be robust enough to meet at least eighty percent of our students' needs. And that's really what our tier one is. And we know that it's meeting their needs because we're analyzing data and using leadership teaming to do that. But then for some of our students, they're going to need a little bit more, right? And so that tier two is really that ghost up tier one, right? So maybe more instruction in social emotional learning, some conflict resolution groups for students who are struggling with conflicts, more connection building, more frequent supervision or feedback. And then for a few of our students, they're going to need some more intensive and individualized supports through tier three. Again, it's not really a substitute for tier one. We're layering it on. So they still need access to that core curriculum, that core SEL that we're doing for all students, and then we layer that on. So when we think about PBIS in our district, there's some really key messages. One is that it's collaborative and it's team-oriented. All of our teams have, all of our schools will have a team that is guiding this work. It really needs to fit the context of that building, and that's why a team is important. We use the catchphrase, the four words all the time, consistent, predictable, positive, and safe. I say those words a lot. And that's important for that bullying prevention too, that kids know what's expected of them. And we also have a, really a key that behaviors communication, because they're trying to tell us something. And so they're not just acting out to, you know, get in trouble. They're trying to tell us something, and we take that approach. We teach that expected behavior. And like they said in the video, we default to reteach before we're just jumping to, you know, punishing or excluding kids. We want to look at, do we need to reteach the skills that they need? And our interventions are really changes in how staff are responding, right? So we're not just expecting the kids to change. We're talking to the adults about how they need to change their practices. All of this really is part of our mental health promotion, right? Mental Health Awareness Month, and that's part of that work. And so when we think about PBIS, it's really just the way we organize. It's the way we organize our classrooms. It's the way we organize our schools and our district. And we're working to prevent problems ahead of time by having those positive relationships, by having that direct instruction, teaming, and then we have consistent responses, right? And so we know what to do. Our Magdillas aren't firing when we respond because we planned it. We planned ahead. Adults know what they're going to do so that can be equitable. It can be instructive, and it can really be dignified for the students. And so I mentioned that this is evidence-based. So one of, we are using two main guides to support our work here in the district. So the school-wide tiered fidelity inventory is the one on the right. That's what schools are using, their evidence-based framework to guide and plan their implementation. So they assess themselves at the beginning of the year. They create an action plan, and they can use that guide to monitor their implementation. And then we're using the district systems fidelity inventory, which is also an evidence-based framework that tells us if we do these things, we will know, we know we'll get these outcomes. So we have a district team that's been meeting monthly all year to monitor ourselves. We just completed our third round of kind of assessing our implementation as a district. And one of the things that we had have identified is we really need to look at our behavior definitions and our behavior documentation system as part of our PBIS action. And so that's some of the work that we're doing that's really connected with this.
So we just want to end by talking about some next steps and some works that is happening right now. So as Sarah mentioned, one of the key things and kind of what we talked about at the beginning of this presentation is right now, we know, for example, that we're linking together discrimination, harassment, and bullying, which isn't providing us the best data. So we're really looking at updating our behavior documentation system to increase consistency overall and get better information on our data. We also know that with this, we need to review and update student handbooks and make sure that those are aligned with our work, as well as our SEL curriculum review process. So we have this already scheduled for next year to really look at and make sure that our curriculum is targeting these efforts and aligning with other areas, but really providing that bullying prevention and resources to our students and staff. And then overall, the way that we can expand this even more as we look for alignment with the academies of Anchorage and how that might also work into some of this work that we are doing. And now we will take any questions.
Questions from anyone? Member Bellamy?
Thank you. You guys really completed a lot of dots in my head, right? You made a lot of connections. So I really, it's better than what I thought was going on, did I put it that way? Instead of going through every single item. So this is, so the instructional side of the house is, I think when we're dealing with kids, I think we're doing, I mean, we're doing great work on the employee side of the house. And I don't know if we can even talk about that today. And I know we are expecting to get a, a report or an audit discussion. But so, and I know we're training teachers to help kids. How are we training teachers to engage with each other? That's one question. And it doesn't have to be answered today because I know this is more instructional today. On that slide where you show the multi-tiers of support, do we have, does the data give us a sense of where the bulliers, the bully, the aggressors and are on that? Are they spread throughout the tiers, or is tier three the worst tier? Do we have that data or not?
So one of the things that teams do is look at screening data. And so they'll look at behavior referrals, and they're also using a behavioral screening in some of our schools. And that could identify students who are at risk, which that kind of coupled with if they're having referrals for this behavior could identify if students need more intervention. So it's, you know, not foolproof, but teams do look at those referrals to find out what are the patterns we're seeing in behaviors that are occurring and what interventions are needed in addition to other consequences.
Okay, but, but, but I guess I'm just looking, so the misbehaviors are occurring no matter where, the tier, across all tiers.
Yeah.
Is not just special needs kids who are misbehaving.
That's right.
Okay, that, that was, that was kind of my point. Mr. Chair, can I have one more address? I'll wait, in case there are others. If there are other questions, I can wait.
Um, we do have member Jacobson has a question. We'll come back around. I meant to note that member Donnelly joined us just after three o'clock this afternoon. Member Jacobson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the presentation. I think my first question is, I guess I don't have the slide deck in front of me. It's, but my understanding is we looked at a slide that relates to outcomes for concerns submitted through Stop It. Are those outcomes and interventions exclusive? Or can multiple interventions be part of a response to a particular concern that's submitted that maybe isn't recorded there? So are those numbers reflecting kind of like the final outcome? Or could one scenario have multiple interventions that's included in that count?
That's a, that's a great question. So to start, when we receive, when schools and administration receives notification that there may be bullying events happening from their students, when we receive that information through Stop It, it's responded to by administration. And we document that in our student information system. So our response to those incidents that come through Stop It are actually documented in Q. And so when we talk about those six hundred and fifty incidents of discrimination, harassment, bullying this year, some of those incidents may have been brought to our attention through Stop It, but far more of those come to us just from interactions with students and students telling us that they're having concerns. As we address those incidents, and this is where we talk about the multiple ways that we support students through actions, we have, again, we can, we can maybe suspend a student in school for a day, but also provide them with a verbal warning and maybe a conference with parents as well, right? And so in that situation, we respond to that behavior with three actions. As we track which of those types of actions work best for some students, that helps teams and helps us maybe revise behavior plans and some other ways to support students in the future.
Did that answer your question, Member Jacobson?
I did have a follow-up if I might, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that answer. So the, the other questions I have on this, this data-centric slide in particular, did we receive a breakdown in the slide deck somewhere that indicates how many of the concerns that came through Stop It were submitted anonymously? And then is, is there a number available that administration can advise us of concerns that were submitted through Stop It specifically? Let me rephrase, actually. So the first question is, how many of the concerns were reported anonymously through Stop It? The second is, how many of our campuses submitted, didn't have any concerns submitted through Stop It, if that makes sense?
That makes perfect sense. We can pull data by school, by behavior type. So for instance, we can pull a report and let you know how many bullying incidents were reported for a specific school. And that's data that we can provide to the school board through Board Connect. This year, we received seventy-six incidents of bullying out of the two hundred and sixty total reports through Stop It. While all of those incidents can be reported anonymously, sometimes students or families will provide a name and contact information for follow-up. And so we can also provide information around how many were submitted anonymously versus provided contact information and names.
Member Bellamy, you had a follow-up?
Yeah.
Member Higgins, you have a question?
I usually leave the light on. I just assume people notice. What can I tell you? I appreciate this. The reporting from the school, what's the requirement when there's a bullying incident there that the principal staff reports to a central location so that you can track things? What's the process there? Do you have something or what, what's in place?
I can speak to the general process when, when any incident is brought to administration's attention. We start by first contacting any students that are potentially engaged or involved in that situation. We involve families and guardians and make sure that they're aware of that. Depending on the incident itself, depending on, you know, we use progressive discipline as we're dealing with behaviors. And so sometimes if a student is engaged in, let's say, a bullying behavior, it's the, if it's the first time they've engaged in that behavior that we know of, we of course first try to make them understand that it's an inappropriate behavior and provide some supports at the building level to address that. And then if those behaviors become repetitive or there's patterns developing, then we'll provide different types of strategies to address that behavior, which could include exclusionary discipline, like the suspension.
I'm looking first though at where it's reported within the school and the school is handling it. What is their obligation to report it to any sources as to what's happening? Is there a central location that they have an expectation from principals? Because there's a number of issues I'm dealing with that I have people calling, and I saw a lot of emotional testimony here in regards to this. And it deals like on a school-by-school basis rather than a centralized issue. And there's a lot of concerns in regards to that. And I have a couple of incidents I'm familiar with that in which there was a, a lack of confidence that they know where to go with the concern or how to raise it to a higher level if they don't feel it's being handled adequately. So my question is, if they have something like this at school, if it reaches a certain level of harassment, bullying, is there an obligation for them to centralize, send that information into a centralized location?
So typically, it's going to come to my office as that student grievance process. Sometimes this can come from a parent or a student, or sometimes they can just come from the principal or the administrator. So maybe they have had this instance going on and, and they can't solve it or they can't resolve it in a way that the family or the students are happy. And that's when it will come from my office as like a third party will do kind of like Joe said, an investigation that's going to look at what has already been done, what has the staff done to try to prevent the behavior. We're also going to talk to the students or individuals, whoever's involved, and then figure out like collectively what's the next best step or course of action to resolve the issue.
The responses I get is that parents don't know to go to your office. They don't know where to go. I talk to principals. I get five different answers where they might go. It's not consistent. So that's why I was asking if there is an issue, are you maintaining a central log? Or is there an obligation to provide it in that so that you do have oversight into it? Or is it left up to the various schools? Because I think that's what I'm hearing in the testimony. That's what I'm hearing from parents. And that's where my concern is at, is just above the school level. That is, there's some review, central review process, so that there is, it's one that parents would know that. Right now, there's a somewhat lack of confidence in some cases because they don't know where that process is.
Other questions?
I do, if I may. Thank you. And I, following up with Member Higgins' comments and inquiries. I do, I, I do think there is a gap between, not even a gap, it's just a, the problem-solving process for parents needs to be clearer. And I think I saw on those next steps, things that, that the things that we might need to do better. Maybe that's one of the things we can, can look at. We do think, as a district, I think we believe that the closer one is to the problem, the better it is to get it solved and solved quickly so that kids can be comfortable and, and continue to learn. When that system breaks down, then what is that next step for, for parents? And probably employees as well, but definitely for parents. So on, on the same slide, I see that we have six hundred and fifty-two cases. Of that number, I think there were a hundred and ninety-nine phone calls to parents and forty-six parent conferences. So I know I'm old school, but it seems to me every time a kid comes to my office for bullying, harassment, and other offenses, a parent needs to be called and made aware. So I guess I'm trying to figure out where, so I don't know that these, so, and, but then I also know how, how things work in schools. So it may not be the administration calling the parent. It may be the counselor. It could be, I mean, who, who knows? But I, I would think that if a child has been determined to have gauged in those kinds of behaviors, a parent has to be notified somehow before it gets into Q. Although Q is a way. So I'm, help me understand how, how that flows and why these numbers appear to be, like we're talking to some parents and we're not talking to others.
Can I answer that? This is Van Gustis, in Chief Academic Officer. So one thing that we have noticed is that in some instances, we aren't recording all of the different things that happen in an incident. And we are working on getting a new system in place through this work with our PBS so that administrators, as they enter things, they can enter numerous different actions that they're doing. And so probably my guess is that most of those did have parent calls, but were not clicked. Or were, once there was a suspension, it's just assumed that there's going to be a parent contact at that time. So I would say that that is not, that number probably is not representative of how many parents were contacted.
And, and I would agree. Because I, it has to be, I mean, I, it just doesn't make sense to me otherwise. And it, just a final comment on, I think it was in the video, the common purpose, common goal, common language. I just think that, you know, school to school, that is so very important. Because it does us no good to talk about these things if it's really not happening and people are understanding it where they are in whatever school they're, they're in. And I know that, how many schools do we have for, are we bringing on next year for PBIS?
Sixteen, and we're ten this year.
Okay, so that.
And then we're moving up from there.
All right, okay. So that sounds great. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I did want to ask, on the Lions Quest lessons, how are they delivered in secondary?
So for middle school, during our weekly advisory period that have, that we have at all over ten comprehensive middle schools, the Lions Quest curriculum is covered during those times. And so there's a, there's a scope and sequence for when those lessons should be provided throughout the year. A lot of times they're content-specific based on a time of year, right? Some lessons we do at the beginning of the year, we're creating culture and making sure students understand expectations. But that's when those are covered at the middle school level.
Any other questions from members? Member Higgins?
Yeah, just, I guess more of a comment here. I can see a real challenge here. I know of one school where there's a variety of concerns coming in. Parents were frustrated with the level that was being taken. By the same token, you've got students with special needs issues and challenges that you have to balance that out. And I'm not sure how to best accomplish that. I can't, I'm just going to acknowledge you've got a. And I'm not sure how to best accomplish that. I can't, I'm just going to acknowledge you've got a a big challenge in doing so. And I appreciate that part because I I realize there were two sides to this coin. You've got the student who may have some behavioral issues that are um mental health issues related. And then you've got uh you also got to balance that out. So I just, I I just wanted to add that part into that comment because I'm very familiar with one of those issues. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, uh sorry, member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Um so a question regarding parental notification. How does ASD right now notify parents of options that students and families have? Whether it be uh stop it or or otherwise uh do parents receive an annual notification as part of registration? Do we lean on the handbook for that? Uh is there? And then the other question, I guess the the second part of that is, is there any acknowledgement that we ask the parents sign or attest to that they've received this information? And then I think the last part of the question is, if we don't have something that parents are receiving annually that kind of uh on a one sheet describes the options that um families have to report concerns regarding bullying, harassment, intimidation? Is that something that we would consider adopting as a district? Thanks.
I think I think that's a great question. We're um I think there's some inconsistency across schools about how that information is communicated to families. I know that at the beginning of the year, um through newsletters, um through some trainings with students um via mini lessons, we provided some of these supports and information about them. Uh we certainly can do a better job of of continuing to remind families that these resources exist. We often, you know, at at most schools have decorum meetings at the beginning of the year and maybe at the beginning of the semesters to help students remember what sort of behavior expectations are. And and reminding the community and students that these supports exist uh would certainly be a good thing for us to do.
Mr. Chair, does that we follow?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the response. What I'm hearing is that um this might be a situation where maybe board policy could be clarified with an expectation. You know, it's not a perfect analogy, but I know that annually federal law for medical care provides uh language that it requires annual notification for things like patients' rights and uh reasons why information might be disclosed. That seems to be a really good process for ensuring that uh a stakeholder group is adequately informed of key sets of information. And so maybe we can borrow from that concept and board policy to provide that structure for uh our campuses to operate in within, to address that inconsistency. But that's a a conversation we can take up and govern. So I really appreciate the conversation and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, member Jacobs. And any other questions from board members? If not, I want to thank panel for presenting and uh we'll keep watching. Next on our agenda is presentation in relation to Academies of Anchorage.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our team and some special guests will be coming up to provide a presentation on the Academies of Anchorage, specifically some key details on our master plan that the the board will be formally considering at our June fourth meeting, as well as some details on student schedules and how through the Academy's model, we can still provide uh well-rounded educational experience for students in areas outside of CTE pathways. So we're excited to share this information in a timely fashion prior to our June fourth vote. With that said, um I'll let the team transition and then I'll hand it off to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Just one minute and we'll get a setup here. All right. Thank you for bearing with us um so that we can get set up here. Uh we're excited to be back to talk a little bit more about the Academies of Anchorage and the master plan um document that's under consideration for the board. Um to start us off, I'll introduce our guests here in a second. Um but I all I have Devon Roberts, our Assistant Director for CTE here, and also Cindy Shapu, um our College Career and Life Readiness uh Director. And then I'll introduce our guests here in a minute um to to help us today. Um so I wanted to start um with our first um kind of just thought process today. Um under consideration today is an adoption of the master plan for a vote on June fourth. Um but I wanted to just stop for a minute and explain what the master plan is essentially. So it's a it's essentially a strategic three-year plan for how we will roll out the Academy's work in our high schools. And so inclusive in the master plan is the tactic plans from the fourteen different tactic teams that were operationalized this uh semester. So they have been working since January to really develop uh high-level plans for how we will roll out an Academy's plan in the Anchorage School District. I wanted to emphasize before we get started today too, this is meant to be a living document. Um it's not meant to be a static document. And so as we progress through Academy's work in the district, this is a document that will ebb and flow over time. It will respond to the needs of our community, it will respond to the needs of our workforce, um and it'll respond to the needs of our our students essentially um in in our system. And we will review this document on an annual basis as we move forward um in our planning. So it also reflects a relationship and a partnership with Ford Next Generation Learning, who has been our coach along this um during this process. It also really emphasizes that this is a community-driven process. This is an Anchorage School District operating, operationalizing the Academy's work on as a sole entity. Um it has lots of connections to lots of different entities across our community. Um and then um I also just wanted to note that it's written as Ford Next Generation Learning as the audience because part of the next uh step is if we advance and adopt this master plan moving forward as a as a district and as a board, um we will continue to go through a process with Ford Next Generation Learning where we where we will be designated at Ford uh School District. Um and it just reflects that partnership um and their structures and their their um rubrics that they evaluate districts with with this work. So looking ahead, um I wanted to just emphasize the master plan has a five-step process. It's part of the Ford Next Generation process. Um and you've seen this in a roadmap form before when we've presented. And if we go to the next slide, um you'll see that, sorry, there's a little bit of a delay. Um but this is our timeline of these steps in the Anchorage School District. So you'll see step one, explore started um with just an idea in two thousand and eighteen and some exploration at the district level. Um but really in earnest, the work started with the adoption of the board goal in two thousand and twenty-one around college and career readiness. And then you see as we've moved ahead in the steps, many of the things that we've talked about in the past, such as site visits to Nashville and Akron, um the developing the portrait of a graduate, our community-wide statement, um developing our steering committee. And now if you look at the red star, we're here at the master plan drafted stage. So we're at the very end of step three, which is the planning phase. And we're about to um embark into the implementation phase, which is step four. So with that, um I'd like to just remind um everyone, we talked about this extensively at the last board work session, um how many hours and people have been involved in this process. So it's really reflective of a community effort. Um so literally thousands of hours, literally hundreds of people um and even thousands of people, if you consider the parent and student surveys have been involved in shaping this master plan for the rollout of academies in the Anchorage School District. So um with that, um I would really like to introduce our guests. Um they um each of our individuals here today um are sta- are city members of our steering committee for the Academies of Anchorage. They are also very involved and respected in their fields. And um so I'll start um by introducing Jenna Wright on the end. She's the President and CEO of the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation. Uh Dr. Denise Rungy is the Provost of the University of Alaska Anchorage. And then Scott Haberstad is the manage managing director for the Alaska Market for Alaska Airlines. And each of them as steering committee um members brings um a a really great perspective for us to this work. And I wanted them to be able to share um not only um how excited they are, but um just their thoughts around how the Academies of Anchorage really is a community solution for our workforce needs and for a way to guide our students um better through the educational system. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jenna so she could start us off.
Oops, sorry. How about now? There you go.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Kristen said, my name is Jenna Wright. I'm the President and CEO of the Anchorage Economic Development Corporation. And one of the primary economic concerns that we're seeing in the data and also hearing from business owners is that there just aren't enough workers to fill the jobs that we have in the economy today, let alone for the growth that we want to see for our economy. So AEDC's strategic plan called Choose Anchorage is aimed at solving that problem by focusing on four elements. Those are business vitality, talent, quality of place, and infrastructure. Very comprehensive plan, there's over fifty goals involved in this plan. But underneath the talent pillar, one of the um primary goals is to highlight the importance of ensuring that Anchorage is producing a world-class talent pipeline for current and future employers by continuing to improve educational outcomes for K through twelve students. So as an economic development uh corporation, we're certainly not um education experts. But the way that we have gotten involved in this goal is through our involvement in the Academy Academy of Initiative. Like Kristen said, I've had the honor of sitting on the steering committee. And then my staff has um provided a lot of workforce data that was used to select the academies that have been presented today. Um and then in addition to that, they've also been sitting on various tactic teams. And so combined, we have spent hundreds of hours on this program because we really believe that it's critical for reversing some of the net out migration trends that we're seeing and ultimately growing our workforce here in Anchorage. Using federal tax data, we know that one in three kids in Anchorage when they were sixteen will no longer be in Anchorage by the time that they're twenty-six. And part of that's because they don't always see a career future in Anchorage. So if the Academy's model is implemented, it will show students that pathway to a career future here in Anchorage. The program will allow for career exploration of Alaska's key industries, forge important relationships between students and local employers, and create pathways through post-secondary education or directly into a job in a field um of the student's choice after graduating. So all that to say, AEDC strongly supports the Academy's initiative as a tool to retain our young, talented Alaskans and grow a sustainable economy for generations to come.
All right, thanks, John. Um next, I'd like to give the floor to Denise Rungy.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. I am Denise Rungy, and I serve currently as the Provost at the University of Alaska Anchorage. And while I didn't prepare written remarks, I I knew that there are three things in particular that I really want to share with you and stress today. The first of these is that there's a a real timeliness to to this work that is happening right now. It's not just about Anchorage, but it's very critical in Anchorage. We see all across the country, young people are less clear than they used to be, which path is right for them. They're uh you know, for for generations, students kind of felt slotted, which way they were going to go. Were they going to go to post-secondary or were they going to go straight to work? Today, those options aren't as clear because the opportunities for folks who don't have any kind of post-secondary training or education are diminishing. And so we know that as 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 a post-secondary provider here in Anchorage, part of why we're partnering with the district is because we want to help make sure that all students, all children graduating from the Anchorage School District see the full range of opportunities that's available for them. And the university is so excited to partner in this because every student going through the academies is going to be ready for whichever choice they want to make. They're ready to come on and go for a traditional baccalaureate degree, they're ready to go into an apprenticeship, they're ready to go into the military, they're ready to take a short-term certificate education program offered by UAA and go to work a year later. So all of those options are going to be available because of the design and intentional nature of this work. I had the privilege of of going on the Nashville study visit and was just blown away by what I saw. And particularly in speaking with high school students, those who didn't want to do the career that was represented by the path they were in. And I asked them a lot of detailed questions like, what are you going to do? You were in the healthcare academy and you said you don't want to go into healthcare. And they're like, no, I'm prepared. It's going to be great. I'm going to go to the military or I'm going to go be an engineer. And they knew what was going to be needed to make that transition and they felt prepared and ready. And as a partner, there's nothing more that we can ask than that the school district prepare every graduate to do whatever's coming next. And we want to be a part of that. The other thing that I want to stress uh from from our perspective and why we too are just deeply, deeply involved in this work, not only myself, but a number of faculty and staff serving on the different tactic teams, thousands of hours probably uh across all of us. Uh my boss joked that perhaps, you know, the district should be paying a portion of my salary because I was spending so much time over here. It it really is about the kids. It really is about them having this school within a school, this opportunity to connect to their teachers more deeply, the teachers connecting with each other. UAA's faculty are super excited because they feel like this is going to create a clear opportunity for them to get to know the high school teachers better and to work more closely with them. And they're eager for that. And my sense is that the teachers are are eager for some of that as well. There's there's an opportunity for us to be better partners in taking care of the kids of Anchorage. Uh the last thing that that I knew for sure that I wanted to share with you is that uh from our perspective, the Academies of Anchorage is kind of like one more amazing tool in the in the toolbox that this district already has. There's already all these great alternative schools, there's the Middle College, there's King Tech, which I just think is amazing. There's all these opportunities and the Academy isn't doing away with any of that. And so again, to me, what this seems to do is give every student in the district more choice, more opportunity. Um and so I'm just really excited to be a part of it and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you. So next, I'll introduce Scott Haberstad from Alaska Airlines.
I've never really needed a microphone in my life, but um and I did prepare remarks because if I didn't, I would ramble on for a long time and appreciate your guys' time. But as Kristen said, uh good afternoon, my name is Scott Haberstad. I'm the Managing Director, Alaska Market for Alaska Airlines. I'm a lifelong Alaskan, grew up in Ketchikan, and I've been blessed to live here in Anchorage and raise my family over the last twenty-three years. In my capacity at work, I'm charged with understanding the business verticals that drive our state's economy, whether it be the fishing industry in southeast or southwest or the Bering Sea, whether it be the North Slope, oil industry, the mining industry, or the visitor industry, or all the ecosystem of businesses that support those industries. I and my team are in tune with what they're doing and what they need. There's a constant drumbeat across all the industries, the lack of workforce. We need to do a better job of educating our youth about the opportunities right here in Alaska. Our community um and state have been working or have been asking for years for our schools to do a better job to meet the needs of our students and the community workforce demands. The ASD leadership team did just that. They went out, they identified a different model, a model with a proven track record in communities like ours. They worked with Alaskan industries to identify needs and opportunities. They worked with students and parents to understand their wants and desires. The Academies of Anchorage team then built a series of pathways where there's wants, where those wants, desires, and needs have the opportunity to intersect. I hope that each of you will embrace and swiftly act on the Academy model and usher in a new tomorrow for our children. and usher in a new tomorrow for our children and our community. Clear pathways worked for me. I was blessed to grow up in Alaska in the East. In addition to the rigorous academic coursework Ketchikan had to offer, they also offered pathways. Included commercial fishing. It included engineering, drafting, commercial welding, and aviation. I took the aviation pathway and earned my private pilot's license prior to graduating high school. I went on to get my commercial license and then realized really quickly that if I wanted to advance somewhere, I needed to get my four-year degree as well. So after that, I flew in the summers and went on to get my four-year degree, and that landed me where I am today. The model works and it worked for me. Before I give up the mic, I want to thank each of you. Your, the decisions you make are personal. They're personal to someone. In a small community like Anchorage, people give you passion. Don't confuse the passion of a few with the overwhelming of the desire of the community. Anchorage needs change. You have the power to support that change. I apply to each of you for your commitment to our community and our youth.
All right. Thanks, Scott. So we wanted to just really give an opportunity to some of our steering committee members that have been a part of this process to be able to share their thoughts and excitement around this work. When we look back at the document of the master plan, I just wanted to give a high-level executive summary of what's in that document. And then you all have access to read in more detail. So just as a brief summary, we outline that our workforce is rapidly changing at this point in time. And that in that rapid change, we really need a transformation in the way we're addressing the needs of students for that future workforce and for work pathways that may not even exist yet. We need to teach them a lot of transferable skills that they can take with them from different types of jobs that may develop in the future. And we really do believe that academies can be a solution for meeting those needs for students as they progress through their schooling. A big part of the summary of our master plan, and I keep coming back to it, is that collaboration is key. We can't meet workforce development needs and prepare students for the future without having a mirror of that, of the business and our community members really telling us what they need from their end so that we can meet the needs before they ascend to the workforce. So we really emphasize that collaboration is a big part of this process, both internally and externally. We also outline that the master plan is now in, is written and could be in place as of June fourth for adoption. And so in that master plan, we've really outlined a three-year strategy for how we will make this work. And the goal of the master plan as we progress in the model is to really have a vibrant ecosystem of workforce development, of a student experience in their preschool through twelve education culminating with the academies of Anchorage in high school. So they go together. Having a good schooling experience also attracts families to an economy and then creates more workforce as well. So it all really works together to have a thriving community. So looking into the details of the plan, we've talked about the three strands of transformation that we have started to architect through the master plan process in partnership with Forward Next Generation Learning. So the first strand is transforming teaching and learning. And each of those boxes below, where it says freshman academy, credit and credential opportunities and workforce-based learning across the line there, each of those represents a tactic team that was formed. So there has been a small, I kind of like to think of it of a small, like beehive of work going on this year where freshman academy was really working hard as a tactic team, credit and credentials, opportunities was really working hard. And all of these tactic team plans are in the master plan to represent how we're going to transform our teaching and learning across the Anchorage School District. So when we look at strand two, this is another set of tactic teams that has been very active this year. So this strand addresses transforming culture, systems, and structures. So when you see these tactic teams, the wellness and support systems has been led by Dr. Jenny Knutson and the mental health and student support team, along with their community partners. Resource management has been looking at exactly that. How are we going to resource this over the long term? Our transition team has been looking at some of our different types of learners in our system and how we address their needs through this transition as well. So there's a lot of thought process into how we're structuring our system to accommodate everyone in the academy's model. So the last strand that's addressed in the master plan is transforming partnerships between schools and communities. And this is where, this has been a huge part of our steering committee work. It's also been a huge part of our community convenings that we posted, amongst other things that we have been doing. But there are four very strategic tactic teams that have been working under strand three. Communications is a huge one so that we're really communicating well with our stakeholders and the general community about this change because it is a change. There is a whole college and career exploration tactic team of over twenty or so people that have been working to really talk about how does that look across an elementary, middle, and high school for exploring so that students are prepared for that academy experience when they get to high school. So these three strands have been the bulk of the tactic teamwork and the bulk of the master plan that you have for review. So looking more globally, there's a few other things I'd like to just highlight about the master plan. Again, community involvement is at the center of the work. We can't do it without that community partnership. That we have really focused on both college and career readiness to build the Anchorage workforce and economy. So we're looking at both college and future careers and having a flexible model where students may go straight to work. They may go to college and they may do something in between such as join the military, go to post-secondary education that's different than a college four-year degree. But the gamut is there and the flexibility is there for students. That's been a high priority through the work. One of the other things I'd like to highlight about the master plan is we really emphasize that teacher training and preparation through this process is really important. When we're transitioning a whole high school division to an academy's model, we need to equip our teachers and our educators on the ground with students to have the tools in their toolbox that they need through this transformation. So that is a huge part of this plan as well. And then really the external partners and that collaboration is really vital to having a very relevant nimble system that addresses the workforce needs of our community. So I wanted to just really highlight those four points. So if we kind of pause there, I want to transition a little bit to looking at different schedules so that you can really visualize what it looks like from a student perspective on their schedules through an academy's model. What I also wanted to stop or just take a pause and mention is that today we're considering the master plan. We will continue to have scheduled conversations as we progress as a district. So just a reminder that part of our plan in the work is to stand up a scheduling committee as soon as school returns in August with teachers and other important stakeholders that would give us input into what the best schedule model would be. Although we will be looking at examples from a seven-period and an eight-period day and comparing those to a six-period day that we currently use in our high schools. So I just wanted to point out that there's, the schedule is important when you're considering the master plan, but we are going to continue to talk about this through the fall as well. So looking ahead at the next slide, I wanted to just... Sure, I can pause and ask questions before we get into schedules if we'd like.
There's been some concern expressed by some members of the public about the schedule changes and increasing the number, you know, how the changes would be from day to day. And there's been an assertion that it would result in a very specific twenty-four percent reduction in the amount of actual time for instruction to the historically core classes. It would still continue. Is that accurate?
So there is a reduction in class time. I'm not sure on the percentage, but I do know minutes over the course of a week. And you're looking at about thirty minutes less per week. But in the schedules, I'll show you ways that those can also be utilized in different ways, those minutes when it comes to core content.
By utilizing different ways, but what do you mean?
So when I show you the example, we'll talk about support classes that can be paired with some of our core subjects for students who may need additional support in a particular subject. And what ends up happening with those support classes, if they're paired with math as an example, is a student would actually have two courses that are dedicated to math that way. So they would get additional instruction in math if that's what they need.
So you're not concerned about that, the significance of the drop in the amount of instructional time in those classes?
So I would say that there's lots of ways to instruct. I would also say that we're on a modified block schedule already. And with that, students don't necessarily attend every day. I know that one of the concerns is not attending every day as well. And so there are ways to combat the loss of instruction time by having less transitions. We talked about that at the last work session when we talked about schedules and less time for students coming and going out of classes. So it really does start to balance out and there are other advantages that I'll explain through the examples.
To follow up on what you just mentioned, I've also heard some concerns about if you don't have something as technical as mathematics every day, I mean, you know, series of days, if you have a day apart. Some parents were concerned about the loss of learning in between by waiting a day between classes.
So students don't have math every day in a traditional high school schedule now. So math meets four times a week out of a five-day period schedule or a five-day-a-week schedule. So essentially, they're already not getting daily instruction in math in our current system. So most of our, or all of our high schools, actually our comprehensive high schools are on a modified block where they meet four times a week. And additionally, I would, I would say that part of the blocking schedule does actually prepare kids for college if that's their pathway in the future. Because at the college level, you're not going to receive instruction in particular subjects daily either.
Yeah, I remember that. Well, just one last question. It's also been articulated to me a concern that in looking at some of the communities that we modeled this after. That they had a much lower people-to-teacher ratio than the Anchorage School District has. And there was a concern expressed that it may not be possible to be as successful in our community with our current people-to-teacher ratio. Have you thought about, considered that argument or concern at all?
Yeah, we've definitely evaluated that. We already make adjustments naturally within our system for particular classes to be smaller than others, even with a set PTR. For example, in many of our CTE courses due to safety, we have a lower number. And then there are other numbers with higher numbers of students in them, even though our PTR is what it is. We would continue to do, to do that so that we can effectively meet the needs of those classrooms. But PTR is really at the board's purview and the central part of this model is the schedule itself. I think as a board and as a district, we can consider how we manage those people-to-teacher ratios as we progress through the budget process. But there are also other factors in other communities that drive a lower PTR such as contracts that have been negotiated or state statute of class sizes. So often, when you're comparing our system to others, there are other things at play than just the PTR that's set at the board level.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. And I should note that member Jacobson's joined us in person. I'm not even sure exactly when that happened. Please continue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So shifting more to our schedules examples, this slide shows you that in the academy's model, we are looking at our four traditional core classes of language arts, social studies, science, and math, plus adding additional CTE or Career Academy course. So we're shifting to a five-required course system. So if you look at the box below that, currently, we are in a six-period schedule. So if we were to maintain that six-period schedule, it would only let students have the choice of one elective per school year, which is problematic. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. So the other options are to look at a seven-period day that gives students the, what they're used to is two elective choices or to look at an eight-period day, which actually expands their options into three elective choices a year. And so going to the next slide, this is an example of just a traditional six-period schedule. It's very similar to what students are taking now in terms of their four core classes and their two elective choices. And this is just an average schedule that you would see for our high schoolers now. You can see in this model, it really does not allow for a student to add that CTE course without really impacting their elective choices. So whether they lose German as an example and aren't able to take a world language or whether they lose PE or fine arts. And those are choices that when we were in our planning work, did not feel appropriate to make a student choose from. We want students to have a well-rounded education to pursue other pathways of interest such as fine arts, world languages, music, JROTC, what have you. We want students to have all of those choices. So if you look at the next slide, we really have narrowed our planning to looking towards a seven-period or an eight-period schedule for students to really meet the needs of the academy work, which we think is extremely important for kids as we are looking forward to their future, while still creating a situation for them in their school that allows for choice and a well-rounded education. So I want to transition. Sorry, do you have a question?
One clarification. When you're saying like seven-period schedule, eight-period schedule, you really mean eight classes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have eight periods every day, but we would have eight periods total over the course of a semester. So yes.
Mr. President, before we let our guests... Thank you. While we're on this slide, it just seems most timely. What, which of these schedules is most popular with other Ford and GL grant recipients?
So our recommendation would be to look at the eight-period schedule for a number of reasons. One, it provides a lot more flexibility in terms of choice for students. It also, quite honestly, is just logistically more friendly to schedule an even number of classes versus an odd number of classes in how we structure lunches and King Tech buses and all sorts of other things, the even, the even numbers make it easier for us. But ultimately, the eight-period day is more efficient financially as well when we're looking at a six-of-eight schedule versus a five-of-seven. That said, the seven-period day does meet the needs of the academies as well. And I would say that the, when you're looking at communities across the country, it is really split between seven and eight periods. It depends on the community and the needs.
Donnelly and then member Higgins.
I want to follow up on member Hallman's question because it's a little confusing to hear you refer to it, the eight-period day. But it's not going to be an eight-period day.
Right, sorry. And that's, that's my vocabulary. So it's really, if you recall at the last work session, we looked at an AV block schedule where you would have four periods each day. That's what I mean when I say periods.
Well, it'd be more appropriate to call it eight courses or eight classes?
Yes, it would be. So we, eight courses that they would be taking in a semester.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, let me just clear off the plate. This has nothing to do with the middle school model. That still continues as is. Okay. Because I know that would be an issue. You've got eight schedules that a student might have. So we're going from five, six to eight. And so I'm looking at the staffing issues, the number of students every teacher will have, assuming that we're going to be able to fill the three hundred and fifty positions that we got opened up this year, not counting the ones that may already be open and hire additional. But the staffing issue is what jumps out. It meant the number of students that every teacher will have. Hundred and fifty kids becomes two hundred and ten. So I'm just looking at it from a quality of education. If we can't get the staffing... necessary to be able to provide this, the impact it's gonna have on us being able to retain teachers with this type of situation. I've gotten feedback from principals and teachers over the eight schedule. Uh, and it's all centered on, we don't have the staff to do that sort of thing. So is, you see that as a commitment in association with this? I mean, I, I wanna go forward with the academy. I also know that trying to go with eight, eight classes in a one week versus six, that's a tremendous workload difference for the staff. And if we're gonna have problems hiring people, if we're gonna have problem keeping people, uh, and not to mention, we need to increase the number of staffing uh with salary and benefits issues being a factor already. Um, my, that's where my concern's at. It's a timing issue and it's, it's a recruitment and retention of staff to be able to get the job done.
So to address the FTE question and the staffing issue, so if you recall from the last work session, the request um when we're looking ahead for budgetary reasons is thirty FTE, uh, uh, about give or take thirty FTE to change from a five of six schedule to a six of eight schedule.
Just a question, Mr. President, could, could, might be confusing for people, FTE. Could you define that?
Sure, so, so that's full-time teacher equivalent. Um, and so we're looking at thirty positions essentially to accommodate the six of eight schedule. Um, part of the plan is to have the resource management tactic team really address that recruitment issue that you were talking about. Um, and so when you look across eight schools and thirty positions, you're talking two to five uh additional staff per school to accommodate the schedule. Um, teachers would be teaching an additional period um in their schedule each semester. Um, however, the number of students in their class could potentially be less depending on how we staff um the PTR rate um in the classroom. So um if we keep our PTR the same, but students are spread across more periods, the class sizes do go down. Now, that, that's really dependent on what we do with a budgetary level here. Um, but I will say that the resource management tactic team, that is part of their plan, is to develop a recruitment strategy to fill those positions.
I'm sorry, but the numbers throw me off a little bit. The total number of teachers in all of our high schools and you're adding thirty and I'm looking at it going, okay, it's gonna go five out of six, it's gonna go seven out of eight classes they're gonna be teaching, right?
Six out of eight.
Six out of eight.
Yes. So they would be teaching six out of eight. Um, the additional periods, um, the seventh and eighth period, one would be for their personal planning time. And one would be for an academy planning time so that they can do the teaming necessary amongst each other with that planning time. So they, they would have two periods throughout the week where they would be um given some professional time to either meet with colleagues and do that planning or have their individual time. Um, that's part of their contract language.
Member Watson?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, the board received, I have a lot of questions. This is one that I'm just going with the flow here. Um, but earlier this, um, I don't know, a couple of recent, recently, the board received um, an answers to an RFI uh about the additional pay that ASD has uh supplanted, um, excuse me, supplemented uh teachers' pay because they've missed their planning times due to workforce shortages. And in some schools, many schools, there were thousands and thousands of dollars uh that ASD has paid because, you know, this teacher missed lunch. This teacher missed planning time. This teacher missed their prep time. So, um, and I have a friend, this is anecdotal, I have a friend who was a substitute this year. And, you know, she referred to trying to make herself pretty scarce at times because she didn't wanna be it. Uh, she didn't wanna lose her lunch or her planning time. Uh, it was challenging. Um, my point here is, how are we going to protect that teacher, additional teacher planning time um when we have these massive workforce shortages that are causing staff to already miss critical parts of their day and cover empty, you know, cover vacant classrooms? That question come out in an understandable way?
Yeah, yes. Um, so we already addressed that at the middle school level um very readily with their collaboration time and their personal planning time. And so um I understand the concern for sure. Um, but if you, so we have been very intentional at the middle school level to say, if it's collaboration time, we try everything we can possible not to pull teachers from that time to cover classrooms. And we rather pull a s- a teacher from their personal planning time to do that coverage and compensate them for that. And that way, the teams still have the ability to meet. That doesn't mean it's always perfect. Um, because there are emergencies that come up in buildings and we have to cover them. But we would, would essentially take that model from middle school and look at it at the high school level as well with that academy planning time. So we would prioritize that team time.
I believe you can resume.
Okay. Um, I, I know this is really complex, so I appreciate the questions. I do wanna dive into some schedules because I think when you see schedules and flexibility and ways to accommodate students, it makes um a lot of sense um with how we have structured um the model. So this is an example schedule of a student in the engineering pathway. And um based on the recommendations from our steering committee, um, the engineering pathway would be at Diamond and Eagle River specifically. So you can see their academy logos up at the top there. So in a seven-period day, students would take their four traditional course, four courses. Um, they would add their CTE course. Here, it would be geared towards engineering. And then in the blue, you can see they still have two elective choices uh as they progress through their schooling. Um, this particular student is a college-bound student. There's lots of opportunities for them to take advanced placement coursework. They also can tailor their core classes to complement their engineering pathway. So you'll notice that the student um has a math focus, is taking AP Computer Science Principles, AP Physics, all things that would complement an engineering um pathway. And then they also have room for world languages and fine arts, which are often college requirements when students apply to the college level. Um, and they still have room for a CTE internship if they choose. And I'd just like to make a note about AP Research as an English course. Um, AP Research has um a lot of student choice uh for students in, in its um coursework where they choose a research project of their, their topic is anything that they are interested in. And so in this particular student's um experience, they potentially could pick an engineering uh topic even in their English course to write about. So uh that's where the team and the pathway is really powerful in the Academy's model to really complement all of their subjects together while still having the elective choices to pursue other passions. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see how a student can add another um choice in their schedule. So in this particular student's choice is banned. And so a student who um maybe wants to continue to be involved in music or a a different fine arts is able to readily participate in that while still participating in a pathway um that maybe isn't focused on fine arts. And so this student um would have um a whole host of options in their schedule. So I wanted to show you um another example um from a different pathway. So we, law and public safety is another one of the pathways proposed. And um it's at six of our eight um schools based on the workforce data that's needed around law and public safety. So this student is a student who maybe needs a little bit more support. Um, and so if you look in their ninth grade and tenth grade year, they have um a support class listed in their electives. So that example I kinda gave at the beginning around math. If a student um needs support in math, uh, they could potentially be enrolled in Algebra One as a freshman. And then they could also be enrolled in a support class that helps them with their Algebra One and get, they receive not only the support they need in the algebra class, but there may be reteaching and additional instructional time that takes place in that class. So while an eight-period or a seven-period schedule does reduce the Algebra One course time, there are ways to add additional minutes of instruction in courses that students need support for um where they actually get more minutes of time in that subject matter so that they're able to be successful. This particular student is also really interested in uh our JROTC program. Um, lots of our students are really interested in JROTC and doing public safety in the future, whether it's military, police force or other. Um, and so they're able to tailor in this schedule an elective that really complements their core subjects and their CTE pathway. So um and if you look at the same student in a eight-period day, you can see that there's even more choice for them. So this particular student chose to take PE electives their freshman year because it's a graduation requirement for PE. Um, but then they also complemented their schedule with a s- um a criminology course. There is a student ambassador program that is um part of the Academy's model as well that teaches leadership skills and other life skills that would be applicable in this pathway as well. So a third example is um a construction pathway, um or a construction tech, I should say. So this is uh suggested for four of our high schools listed across the top there. This is a student who is an immersion student. Um, maybe they are in the West Immersion Program or the German Immersion Program. Um, so you could interchange Spanish for other languages. But in this particular case, the student is able to continue their immersion pathway in their electives. But they're also able to do the construction tech academy work. Um, and so you can see that there are um opportunities for AP and advanced coursework for this student. And they're able to um accommodate their um immersion choices as well. And then if you add um an eighth period on the next slide, um, you can see that, oops, sorry. Um, you can see that this student um also an- added um some fine arts, but maybe they wanted some support with their AP coursework um so that they could get some additional time and instruction with advanced placement. So you can add support classes for a higher-end class as well, not just for students who are struggling in um one of their regular classes. So there's opportunities for targeted um support and um what students need in the schedule options.
And I do need to interrupt for a moment. We still have two other items on our agenda today. Um, just looking at the number of pages we have left, I, I see this going until five o'clock. Uh, there's a board satisfied that if we ask the staff on those other two items to, away to a later work session uh so that we go ahead and give the rest of our time for this. Do you wanna check to that?
Mister Chair, if I might, um, I, if we aren't gonna have time to address start times today before we adjourn our work session, I'd like to circle back to RFIs, but other than that, that's fine.
Yeah, I couldn't quite hear you in that.
I'll try one more time with the mic closer. If we aren't going to have time to um discuss start time Q and A today, I would, before we adjourn our work session, um, I would like to circle back to RFIs. But we don't need to do that now.
I, I do wanna let staff know that it does look like we won't get to those two items. I apologize for that. Uh, but we'll continue on with this and remember lessons, I think you have a question.
Thanks. Each of these slides has had a CTE internship uh box, whether blue or green. Um, mostly green, I guess, but yeah, some are blue. Um. How does that work? And when I ask how does that work, I'm interested in avail of, understanding available CTE mentors out in the community, knowing that the gifted mentorship, looking for fifty or sixty mentors sometimes has a challenge. And two, how does that work from a transportation basis? Because if I'm a twelfth grader with no car at South High School or Service High School where I know people mover doesn't exist, um, how do I get in and out of my school to go to a CTE internship?
So the CT internship is just an example. It's not necessarily some, it's something we are striving for and it wouldn't necessarily be every student has that opportunity at the beginning. So as we've talked about in other sessions, um, when you are looking at internships, um, part of this plan is to build that deck of opportunity for students. And so that's really outlined in the Business Engagement Tactic Team Plan of how we're progressing to develop those relationships. That's why the community involvement and our business partners, some of which that are here today, is really important for us to open those opportunities up for students, um, for businesses that are willing to host those interns. To begin, we would probably start with a smaller number of internships so that we're not overtaxing our businesses. And we would also pair um what we would call a senior capstone experience for a student where they may not necessarily be involved in a daily internship, but they have job shadowing experiences and they have other types of interactions with business in their field of study. And so um, so that's just a placeholder as an example right now. Um, but there is a tactic team specifically um dedicated to finding what those opportunities are through business engagement. All right. Um, so if we look at an eight-period day, um, or sorry, we already did a day. We're on to our last example here with Health Sciences. Um, so this is a pathway that is available at six of our eight high schools in the proposed plan. Um, again, a student is taking their traditional four core classes and then they're adding that green um row, which is the CTE component. And this is actually um a pathway that's already established in, in the district um readily right now. And students are actually choosing to do this in a six-period day. In this particular model, we look ahead um at being able to offer um an additional elective for students where they would still be able to pursue um a, a world language if they would like, or um some fine arts courses. Um, and so they have additional options to be um involved in other things in their schedule. And this student is really more focused on either straight to work or a technical training um kind of trajectory. Uh, so if you change to an eight-period day, it, it shows you that there's even more opportunity for students to do other things. And this one is particularly focused on fine arts um as an option because we know that a lot of our students like to engage in that. So it just shows you the, the flexibility of um what's possible for kids as, as you add additional credit opportunities. So to summarize, I wanted to just um really hit, hit a couple of key points around the seven and eight uh, s- seven and eight-period um schedule. So when we look at supporting students through schedules, these, the, when you have additional periods that you're able to support students, you can be more strategic. And so you can look at additional credit recovery opportunities. If you recall from the last work session, that is one of the places that we anticipate some cost savings as a district. We spend um quite a bit of money on summer school and other credit recovery efforts. And with eight additional periods built into the school day, we're able to address those needs in a timely manner for students. So students don't fail a course and have to wait all the way to summer school to address that. We can, we can address that in the next semester for a student and get them caught up more readily and in a timely manner. But it also gives us the opportunity to offer all different types of support classes, whether a student needs additional support in a math class or an English class, or maybe they're stretching themselves in an advanced placement course and we can support them in that effort as well. Um, and then when we look at um adding those additional courses or classes to the schedule um each year, you provide additional credit opportunities and that's really where students like to choose their classes. Um, choosing their electives when you're scheduling a high school student is typically the most important part of their schedule for them. Um, it's what they wanna do and what they're really interested in. And um we've touched on it a little bit already, but when we look at seven or eight-period schedules, um typically those are delivered in some sort of block fashion as a college schedule is. And so getting students used to um not having a class daily really preps them for that next level at the college. Um, the college and university level. So just to round out our presentation, this is um the same board uh timeline that you've seen with decision points from the last work session. But um today, we're um presenting the master plan. Um, it's for your um consideration and non-action this week and for a vote June fourth to adopt that master plan. It's been um really vetted through lots and lots of iterations with tactic teams, um, the, the ASD team and also recommended by the steering committee. And then as we look to next year, um, in the fall, we will stand at that scheduling committee and conversation and be back at the board really discussing what those scheduling recommendations are. Um, and then you still have that budgetary vote um to really a- um accommodate the funds needed for the schedule change recommendation. That will still be a part of your process. Um, and then I just wanted to point out that next summer, we would. we would do our annual review process where we would look at what's working, what's not working, what changes do we need to make? And that would be a robust effort with our business partners, our tactic teams, the steering committee, and then also with you as a board. So I just wanted to highlight that as next summer's work. So with that, that concludes our, our presentation, Mr. President.
Member Jacobs. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation to our community partners. Please know I appreciate your participation, volunteering your time. I'm thankful you aren't biling us. And, and to be clear, from where I'm coming from, I'm, I'm on board with the vision. I, I think I see why the eight-period quote-unquote day is preferable. I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around, and I, I was running an email to Dr. Bryant earlier, a couple of things. One of them is Akron, another grantee from the Ford NGL project, which has roughly half the students that we do, has implemented a, a fine arts-related career academy. I, I track why we want these academies that are focused on things like healthcare, construction. These are the industries that the majority of our youth will move on to if they stay local or if, and if they want to make a solid living, right? But not all of our students will go on to one of these fields. I would assume more of our students than in Akron, just based on pure ratio, will be interested in the opportunity to pursue kind of a fine arts-related academy. So I'm wondering why we didn't get there. So I'm thinking through, like, if I'm a student at Bartlett, and we mentioned, I think, in our last work session, the majority of the students in this academy model stay where they're comfortable, stay where they're at. So if I'm not interested in, as a student in industry and construction, health and human services, or business and design, but I really want to pursue fine arts, I'm probably not going to leave my friends and go to a different school for a different pathway. That's not what I want to do. But it seems like a, a potential missed opportunity for those families that really do want to pursue fine arts for their students during their high school career and allow them to have that freedom before they get to college and what's next. So I guess I'm wondering, is it feasible to add that at this point? Is there a reason that it was fully vetted and termed, determined to be not possible? How do we get there?
Sure. I can start about how we got, got there first, and then I could talk about kind of the tactic teams' work and, and how we ended up where we did. And others may want to chime in as well. But so to start, we really didn't want to limit students' ability to be really involved in fine arts. There was a, there, there's two schools of thoughts that you want all kids to have opportunity with fine arts, or you want very specialized academy work with fine arts. There was a concern from the beginning that if we developed a fine arts academy, it would draw all of our best musicians to this academy as opposed to giving them opportunity to shine at their local high school, as an example. And there was a real want to have robust programs at every high school when it came to their music programs and their, their other fine arts programs. That said, fine arts academies are existent because it's been a community want in other communities that have done this work. And so I will say that if, if that rises to the level of us needing to consider that, that's part of that annual review process that this master plan lays out, where we hear that need and we make adjustments within our system. The idea of the master plan is that we're responsive not only to the workforce data, but also to our community needs. And if our community is really telling us that a fine arts academy is what they want, then that's when we would evaluate that as a system that's looking at implementing the academies. But there really was true intention from the planning standpoint that we wanted really vibrant, robust fine arts opportunities for every student across the board, which is why we steered away from having a specific academy at one specific school. Transportation was one of those considerations as well because we haven't quite gotten there to that planning. That's the next phase of planning, is how we logistically work that as well. So we didn't want to pigeonhole kids to one academy across eight different schools just for fine arts. We wanted them to have those opportunities at their home high school if needed. The second part, I will say, is that, to, to be honest, the workforce data didn't show a need for fine arts academy. While we do have a very vibrant arts community, it's usually paired with another industry such as hospitality or entrepreneurship and business. Many of our arts positions in the community, if you will, are tied to another industry where the workforce data shows up.
Follow-up. Just trying to think of. I track that, and I, and I hope more of our graduates choose to stay in Alaska. I guess my, my, what I'm wondering based on that is, so does that mean Akron doesn't have fine arts-related electives at their, I want to say it's six or seven. It's not quite as many large high schools. Does that mean that their electives are somehow lesser than because they have a fine arts academy? I didn't see that when I reviewed their academy data, but maybe that's the case. The other thing I, I think, you know, census data says we're losing a third of our 16 to 26-year-olds. If a, if a student is truly focused on fine arts with the intention to not remain in Alaska, there may not be the workforce need here, but maybe there will be somewhere else. And so I, again, I'm supporting the broader vision. I'm still not hearing an answer where I track, unless there truly wasn't a community support for it. And then maybe that's the other thing I didn't hear. And the answer was folks in the community and the tactic teams didn't hear anyone interest. If that's the overarching theme, that's fine. But I, I still haven't heard an answer as to why we wouldn't want to explore it.
Yeah. Just as a follow-up, Member Jacobs, when we surveyed students and parents as a part of our work in developing the Career Academy model that's a part of the master plan, quite honestly, from parents and students, it didn't rise to, to the level of developing an academy when we did that survey data. And there were over 10,000 survey respondents. And so, well, I'm not saying that there aren't individual families that are interested. That, that absolutely is the case. And, and we believe fine arts is really important, which is why we wanted to develop a system that allows students to do both. But when we surveyed our community through parents and students, it, it did not rise to the level of developing an academy through that work. I believe you have, but I'm happy to share it again if I'm mistaken, so.
Number Lawson.
Briefly, just as a parent, I don't, I remember filling out the survey. I don't remember whether there was a fine arts box to check. It's kind of, I think it was like, would you like your broccoli or your cauliflower? Not something else that might be delicious. But, but maybe I'm mistaken. So I think that would be a good data point, just so we can see what options were. And in fact, were all options the same at all schools?
Sure.
So what were the questions that people were asked? I think for, for me, given, well, number one, I intend to hold this as a non-action item so we can continue discussion a little bit later. So just heads up, I'm going to pull it because it is a master plan. And number two, this is maybe not an official RFI time, but within the next week, and I'm going to say the next week because as Finance Committee Chair, I'd like to schedule a Finance Committee meeting in about a week to follow up on this a little bit more. I'd really like to see the district identify, say, a three-year funding plan for this that encompasses an implementation budget that compares the cost of this with, oh, say, our fund reserve forecasts. I don't want us to be sacrificing PTR or other programs that currently exist to implement this. I mean, I think for, for our faculty and for our workforce development champions here, I, I find it hard to imagine that our workforce development pipeline will be strengthened by increasing class sizes in K8 to support an improvement of career readiness in nine through 12. So, so I can finesse the official request for information about Finance Committee meeting, but I'm interested in what is the three-year plan to, to make this affordable without sacrificing other parts of our institution?
Can I just make a, Ms. Chair?
I was going to say you're asking for that in relation to the committee meeting.
Yes, and I will follow up specifically with a, like a written request.
We don't expect you to have that off.
No, that is not for now. That's like for, you know, I'm imagining a finance committee on the 28th or 29th.
Member Bellamy?
Yeah, just in my recollection, when we were early on planning, we talked about, I think I did bring up the fine arts piece, and I know that they gave it a lot of attention. It was not one of the community's required, requirements. But, or at least wants, I guess, or needs at the time. That could change over time, and we can come back and review. I really love that kids get, will still get the fine arts opportunities at their home schools. I don't, we're not denying kids. While there's no, so I'm, I'm okay with there not being an academy because I know that kids will, I mean, a, a fine arts academy, which I pushed for early on. Because now I, I, I realize that what I want for kids, what every kid to have is access to the fine arts at whatever school they're at and not have to have detracted, not tracked, but directed into a, an actual academy. Or, yeah, I mean, because what we're looking at is, you know, we, we, what's happening at West should still be happening at West with the dance and the, what's happening at East should still be happening there. Kids should still have access to those. And maybe what, one of the outcomes I would like to see is maybe within the community, what are those extra opportunities for kids that might not cost an arm and a leg for parents to access? Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I know we're running short on time, but if you could talk, and Ms. Ronge, this is partially going to be directed to you as well, a little bit about dual credit opportunities for students and certifications, those type of opportunities.
Sure. And maybe I'll go back to one of our schedules here so that we can kind of look at it from that lens. Many of these CTE pathways that you see can also be essentially dual credit courses that lead to either college credit or a certification of some sort. And that's the design of the academies. So in addition to that, we've started really already providing opportunities this summer to our teachers to become dual credit teachers for both the university and the district. So that in the, the subjects of English and social studies, that they'd be able to offer college credit while they're teaching high school classes as well. So one of the main goals of the Academy's model is to exponentially increase dual credit for our students, APIB opportunities for our students, which can lead to dual credit at the university level and/or industry credentials. And, and that's going to be the major power of, of this system of academies is giving students not just their diploma, but those, those things they can take with them to the workforce or the next level.
And, and I would strengthen that by saying that we did a quick analysis of the proposed academies, and every single one of them has at least one non, what we call general education, which is your kind of core subjects. There's an additional at least one course that could be articulated for dual enrollment credit in each and every one of the proposed academies. So it's really extraordinary how well-aligned it is to the opportunities available through the University of Alaska system. The other thing that I would note is this partnership training high school teachers to also simultaneously be able to deliver dual enrollment in their high school classroom is really innovative. And, and, and I'm just so excited to be partnering with the district on it because, again, it's starting that conversation between the college teacher and the high school teacher. And there's opportunities for them to learn from each other. You know, the college teachers don't know everything, right? So the high school teachers can teach the college teachers who also are teaching the high school teachers. It's really an exciting model, and we hope to be able to extend it.
Other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, pardon me. I would entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and.
Mr. Chair, before I make that motion, I wanted to thank again our panelists. I really appreciate the time. But then I also wanted to return to RFIs for just a moment, if I could, since we aren't going to cover school start times. Can we return to RFIs for just a minute before we adjourn to executive session? So one more time, I have an RFI I'd like to submit since we can't cover school start times today. Is that okay if I request that now from the administration?
Start times today in this meeting or?
At this work session. It was a topic in our work session.
Yes, by all means, you can add.
Thank you. Okay, so my RFI says we're not going to have time to talk about during our work session is one. I see interest in pulling or building leadership, specifically principals, vice principals regarding their feeling of readiness regarding the, the change in start times coming up. It strikes me that the board hasn't heard directly, directly from anyone but administration regarding the change. And so my ask is a, a basic survey go out regarding the readiness for the school start time change that's being proposed and adopted. The other, I guess it's a part two, which I was just recently informed of, and I, I can't confirm, to be clear. I've heard anecdotally that the Boys and Girls Club, which provides supplementary transportation in the Mountain View neighborhood, has chosen to cease providing that transportation based on school start times. So I was hoping to confirm that via an RFI. Thanks.
Are there other board members that want to sign on? Member Wilson? Any other requests? If not, Chair, we'll entertain the motion to move to executive session.
Move to, adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contracts, negotiations, and legal updates.
Do I have a second? Move consecutive. We are in adjournment. Thank you.